Good evening. Welcome, and I'd like to go ahead and call our regular Winton Woods Board of Education meeting to order. It is Monday, October 22nd, 6:30 PM. And if you will please silence cell phones, electronic devices, so that we have no interruptions, we greatly appreciate it. And everyone, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. Treasurer Seymour, would you please call our roll this evening?
Dr. Johnson?
Here.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Present.
Mrs. Rugless?
Present.
Mr. Burdy?
Present.
Mrs. Miranda?
Present. We're gonna go ahead and move into our district honors, recognitions, gifts, and introductions. Superintendent Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President and Board, is Jana here?
Jana.
Jana?
She's on her way.
On her way. Okay, give me a signal when she comes in.
I will.
All right. All right, that's not her, I'm sure. She's a, she's a, she's a primary south. Okay. Is Paul here? Okay. Those were the Kiwanis Awards, we'll come back. What about Quana Locker? All right, stand right up there for podium.
Hi there. Come on up.
Vincent, DePaul, Ginsway, Kamga. All right. Been working on that like all day.
Ah, there you are.
So somebody, Mr. Tash, where's Mr. Tash? Mr. Tash, stand up there. I love you, Mr. Tash, let me tell you why. You, when you wrote about him, you only just called him Vincent, so that's all I have to say. So, thank you very much. Stand up there next to him. Vincent will receive the Kiwanis Student of the Month. Is our Kiwanis rep here?
Yes.
Okay. Yes. Now, when I read about Vincent, you, this is gonna be absolutely amazing, and I don't know how many people could pull this off. Vincent arrived with his family to the United States less than two years ago, knowing no English at all. During this short time, he has become completely fluent, both in speaking and in writing. Vincent's work ethic has become, is beyond compare, spending every spare moment on his studies. He even utilizes a tutor outside of school to ensure he will be ready to pass the tests required for graduation. This summer, Vincent attended a program at Miami University's Middletown Campus that assists ESL students to become college-ready. On top of earning mostly As here at school, Vincent also plays on a soccer team and has a job where he made enough money to buy himself a car. Wow.
Wow. Nice.
So for, for every parent in there, that, that last sentence would be very compelling.
Yes.
A job to buy himself a car. Aside from being a great student, Vincent is also a great person. We have many French-American, African, excuse me, French-African students who came to the school, not knowing any, any English. Vincent is more than willing to take these students under his wing and help them get acclimated to American schools. We found Vincent to be invaluable in that regard, since there are not many French-speaking staff members. Vincent is the perfect example of how effort and determination can make a person successful. He is a fine role model for our younger students in demonstrating the qualities we want to see in all of our warriors. I cannot wait to see the next chapter unfolding for Vincent. This is Mr. Brad Tash, School Counselor. That's an amazing story. Absolutely.
You guys wanna come over here so we can get out from behind the podium? And then afterward?
He doesn't want to. But you have to show them how to wire that you can.
Right. Good morning, everybody. Good evening, everybody. My name is Vincent, and I just wanna say thank you to Mr. Anthony Smith, the Superintendent, and the Board of Education. Yeah, I just wanted to thank you for this award. I appreciate you guys. Thank you, that's all.
Two years. That's amazing. Okay. So I believe... Jana? Jana? Jana came in.
Is that you, Jana?
We've been waiting for you.
All right, come on up, darling.
How are you?
Jana receives the Kiwanis Character's Key Award, and she's in kindergarten at Primary South. For the respect character count, I've chosen Jana Goldberg. Below, I've included a description of why she's the perfect candidate. On the first day of kindergarten when I met Jana, I knew I was going to have the opportunity to teach an extraordinary little warrior. When I reflect on what it means to be a New Tech Warrior, Jana Goldberg fits the description perfectly. Warriors are team members, team players who thrive on the community. Jana knows the importance of classroom community and strives every day to support me in creating a classroom culture where students both love and respect each other. She does this by taking a strong leadership role in the classroom. She first listens to the directions and then models and teaches them to her peers. When teaching them, she is slow to explain and support. She does not grow frustrated when her peers do not understand. Instead, she thrives on the opportunity to help her classmates achieve their goal. I think I'm gonna have her come to my executive team meeting. At that young age, Jana real recognizes the power of unity in the classroom and makes it her mission every day to support her peers in being successful. With this growth mindset and passion about community, she is well-deserving of recognition for being a respectful, respectful New Tech Warrior. Jana, thank you for bringing to life a definition of the Warrior Way. You are proudly the future of our district, an incredible teacher, and I know this firsthand, Ms. Emily Perkins. Ms. Perkins, come up for that picture, please. Mom? Who else is here? Who else is here with her? Okay, picture time, whole family. See, we send you a nice letter letting you know that we're gonna take your picture.
I'll order a picture, okay?
You can come on in. That way the food is not on.
Okay. All right, I got everyone.
I am so happy we waited for you.
Yes, yes. 'Cause I got flowers.
Thank you.
Okay. Is Quana Locker, did she come in yet? All right, we'll come back. The Winton Woods High School was part of the Ohio Rep, House of Representative Student Art Exhibition, and is Quana Jones here? These Quanas don't show up. All right, we'll come back. Is there someone here from the music department? Okay. Yes, sir. Okay. You're the director. That's why you're on time. Come on up.
We're the lucky representatives today.
So these guys did something with the entire band, they did something absolutely incredible. And what they did was, they played at this night game at Elder. And some parents sent me some nice friendly letters about that. It's gonna be a night game, Superintendent, and do you realize that they have to travel to Frankfurt, Kentucky at 5:30 the next morning? But guess what? This is the commitment that the band has. And I can tell you, they showcased their talent at the Elder game in the freezing rain, and came through victoriously. And then they were able to march down Capitol Plaza, right there, right there. Right there. Marching down Capitol Plaza, representing the Winton Woods City School District as incredible, incredible musicians. The people on the sidelines clapped and applauded, and I was proud to be the Superintendent and listen to them as they marched down Capitol Plaza, and you guys did an incredible job. They were also invited, so when you're marching in the band in that parade at Kentucky State, you get the opportunity, there are judges there that will determine who gets to play the Star Spangled Banner. Well, guess who got to play? Winton Woods City Schools. So, we were very, very excited. Thank you guys for the commitment, thank you for the long drive on that yellow bus, it was worth it. And the Frankfurt, people in Frankfurt absolutely loved Winton Woods. So thank you guys for your commitment, your hard work, and getting up that next morning at 5:30, I'm sure that was a stretch, but guess what? Go Warriors, that's what Warriors do, right? Say it like you mean it, Brandon. That's true, that's right, that's what we do. So I'm saying, that's what Warriors do, and he's like, yeah, true. So say a little bit, I'd like someone to say a little bit about the experience that you guys had.
I'll start off. I mean, it was, it was exciting. We, we knew going into it it was gonna be a long weekend, but at the end of the day, it was exciting. We love to represent Winton Woods, and so we love to make sure that every time we go out, our district is well-represented. So, you know, not only in the state of Ohio, but in the state of Kentucky. So it was a, it was an honor and a privilege to be able to represent both the district, you know, Forest Park, Green Hill, Springfield Township, the Cincinnati area, and just to go down there as a band and experience that, that environment. It was a very, you know, we call it musically-charged environment. There were a lot of good bands there, we met a lot of people. So once again, it was a wonderful experience. It was a little rough. It was a little rough that early in the morning, but it was, it was a great experience. So, you know, Mr. Smith, we thank you. Mrs. Denny, we obviously, we thank you as well, you were a big part of that, Mr. Denny as well. And just everybody who supported us. I mean, there were a lot of teachers and administrators, and I, I forget the guy who made the food, but I mean, we had food at, at, you know, 5:30 in the morning, so it was, it was a Warrior Team effort, so we appreciate everyone. And I know I can't speak for the students, but I enjoyed myself, you know, my Facebook was lit up, and we were all marching, and, and, you know, some of us had, you know, little crusties in our eyes at 5:30 in the morning, but by the time we got to Frankfurt, we were good. We were good. So, I know, like I said, speaking of having Ms. Ashbrook and the rest of the staff, we definitely enjoyed it, and we, we just appreciate the support, and we appreciate the opportunity anytime we can go out and represent the Wood, represent Winton Woods, and, you know, be a part of the Warrior family.
Bravo. Any other comments, guys?
I'll go. Um, you know, first of all, being honest, nobody was really excited about going, but as soon as we got down there, got off the bus, it was a totally different attitude. I could just tell standing in front of the band, conducting, that it was a totally different sound that we haven't heard before, and so it was a really motivating experience to go down there, see all the other high school bands, as well as Kentucky State's marching band. It was a pleasure to go to the game, be a part of that experience. Yeah, but at first, it wasn't looking too cool, but everybody had a really great time, and the bus ride home was really exciting, and we couldn't stop talking about how much I needed.
You know what's amazing? I actually attended that university, and I had felt the same way when I first went. Not too cool, this isn't right, I don't wanna be here, and then after a few days, I'm saying this is a great experience, so thank you. Ms. Ashbrook?
Sorry. I just wanted to say that the, the kids were pretty frustrated when I told them they had to get up at about 4 o'clock in the morning and meet me at 5:00. However, I told them that if even one of them gets a scholarship, it will be worth us all getting up in the morning. So, and the band director there, I had not met him previously, that was the first time I had met him, and he was, the first thing he said to me was, "I really wanted Cameron Barnes to come here." That was my drum section leader that just graduated, and I said, "Well, you didn't give him enough money." 'Cause he ended up going to Central State where he got more money, and he said, "Well, I'm not gonna let that happen again, 'cause I know that you got a good program." So he wants to come down and talk to the kids starting in January, and try to offer them some money and stuff, so. He said he's gonna show up with scholarship money, so that's what it's all about. And, yes, we're busy, and I just wanted to share this really quick. This is our trophy that we got, hold just a second, on Saturday, 'cause Saturday we went to the Little Miami Band Festival, this Saturday, and it's really cool, little, they made it our school colors, it's very nice. It's a band festival that we went to, and they did absolutely awesome. It was very windy, very rainy. I think we're getting used to the rain, though, since we have our nice rain jackets. Mr. Smith?
Yes.
But I did wanna share this, too. So, like I said, the scholarship opportunities, I think, will be very good for some of the students, and it was a very good connection that I made with, with the, with the band director there. So, that's what I'm looking forward to, him coming and talking to the students and getting them some money, so that's what it's all about.
We knew, we knew that the experience would be a good one, because one of the things that, I don't know if you guys realize, but Mr. Denny, Mrs. Denny, Mr. Brandon Smith, Ms. Ashbrook, Mr. Martin, and myself, we took a trip there before the homecoming festivities, just to see if the environment was gonna be right for our kids. And when we looked around, they said it's unanimous, that we have to let our kids participate. We made the decision for the kids, we didn't tell them about the 5:30 thing until they woke up.
We didn't tell them not to.
But it, it worked out tremendously, and I'm telling you, they represented us very, very, very well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Photo time.
I am shorter. I'll be in front of Randy. I've never worn flats again. Thanks for playing.
Thank you.
We love you. You're my hero.
There's a special recognition for our incredible guidance department. The Board of Education would like to express its appreciation to the following guidance staff for their exceptional efforts to invite and host 39 colleges and universities for the benefit of our senior graduates, senior students. Mr. Brad Tash, counselor, grades nine to 10, A to K. Ms. Kim Goins, counselor, grades nine to 10, L to Z. Mr. John Baishu, counselor, grades 11 to 12, A to K. Ms. Christina Jarenett, counselor, grades 11 to 12, L to Z. And of course, this cannot be done without Ms. Diana Barrett, Guidance Secretary.
Just so you know, Mr. Smith, that number has actually increased since that time period.
That's our goal, what is it now?
Oh, I'm not sure exactly, but definitely probably 45 at least.
Okay, so 50, 50 colleges.
Yes.
Awesome.
Before we take a recess, we have a thank you letter from Tyja Griggs, who was our Student of the Month last month, or perhaps the month before. She wasn't able to physically be here, so I wanna read her letter, and thank you, Mr. Tash, for bringing this. It says, "Dear Superintendent and the Winton Woods staff, I am so honored to be the Student of the Month. Having the chance for this opportunity has been amazing. Thank you to my counselor from last year, Mr. Tash. I also want to thank the Board for taking the time to recognize me. I'm so sorry I wasn't able to take pictures with you all, but I thank you so much for your support. Having to work with a lot of the Winton Woods staff has been truly fun and educational. So I want to thank my teachers from now and the previous years. I also want to thank Ms. Tanai, Tanai. Me and my family really love how sweet and kind you are. You are doing so great at your job. Thank you for the beautiful words in your letter, it really made my day. I love Winton Woods, and I'm so happy to be a part of this community. I want to see it grow and develop in more ways, so thank you all for this opportunity that you have given me. Love you, and go Warriors. Sincerely, Tyja Griggs." And with that...
President Miranda, when you first read it, did she say the superintendent was sweet and kind, or she was saying somebody, somebody else?
I think she was talking about Ms. Tanai.
Okay, all right, just checking.
But thank you for the clarification. All right, congratulations again to our amazing staff, our phenomenal warriors, and at this time, we'll take a five-minute recess. All right. We will now come back to order. We have no public comments this evening in item number four, so we're gonna move right along into item number five, which is the approval of minutes as presented. Board colleagues, unless you see any corrections, a motion would be in order for this item, please.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Sure. Dr. Johnson?
I'm staying.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mrs. Rugless?
Aye.
Mr. Burdy?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes, and we'll move into item number six for the Treasurer's Report. Treasurer Seymour, you have the floor.
Yes, your financial report for the month of September had, General Fund had revenues of 18.6 million month, year-to-date, and 3.65 million for the month. Most of the revenues for the month were our final settlement and our homestead and rollback on that General Fund. Also, in the expenditures of the General Fund, year-to-date is 12.3 million, year-to-date, and we're currently running approximately 1.6 million under budget. I looked back at the last two years, and we're pretty much holding steady to, pretty much what we did the last two years. But, as you know, with a larger budget, 1.6 is less of a percent of a smaller budget, but still running right around the same percentage.
Good to know.
Our, all of our funds, we had approximately 83 million, of which approximately 20 million was the General Fund, 9.6 for the Building Fund, 53.3 for our Classroom Facilities Fund.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Seymour? All right, seeing none, we will let the financial statement for the month of September 2018 be filed for audit, and Treasurer Seymour, back to you for item number seven.
Our interest for the month of September was $237,000, of which 30,500 was the General Fund, and our Building Fund received $206,949 for the month of September.
Board, a motion would be in order for this item.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to improve, to approve the investment report as presented.
It's been motioned and seconded. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Sure. Dr. Johnson?
I'm staying.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mrs. Rugless?
Aye.
Mr. Burdy?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes. And Superintendent Smith, over to you for the reports of the Superintendent.
Yes, Madam President and Board. The school reports, Building Leadership Team Minutes' summary are included, but I'd like to comment on something that I know parents and students have been waiting for. October 26th is Report Card Distribution Day, and so we're hoping that our Warriors have worked diligently to keep their grades up. And I think the other very important day is, there's a Professional Development Day, No School for Students on November 2nd, and that's district-wide. And finally, there is a midterm date that comes up on November 16th. And, not finally, but this is the final one, November 6th is Election Day, so please make sure you keep that in mind. November 6th is Election Day.
Thank you, Superintendent Smith. We'll move right into 8.02.
8.02. First read, Revised Bylaw 165.1. And if you look at the section on your, on your tablet or laptop, the main factor on 1.65.1, Regular Meetings, there is an addendum, there is an addition, and it's in Section B. And it reads, "The meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business. It is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for public participation." Here's the addition. "By district residents, students' parents, guardians of students attending Winton Woods City Schools, or those invited to participate during the meeting as indicated in the agenda." So the addition is, it's specifically for parents, guardians, students attending Winton Woods City Schools, and that is clarified in Section C.
Thank you, Superintendent. This is, of course, a first read, so any questions that you have in the future, or before our next regular meeting in November, please feel free to ask the Superintendent and his staff. And now, we'll move into item number nine, beginning with the Personnel Schedules, Superintendent Smith?
Yes, Madam President. The recommendation is to approve Personnel Schedules as presented, Schedule A, Schedule B, Schedule C, Schedule D, and finally, Schedule E.
I'd like to make, oh, go ahead. I'd like to make a motion to approve Personnel Schedules as presented. I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Any questions or comments?
I did have one, just for, so that we have transparency, 'cause we've made some changes, and I kindly asked Ms. Wilson if she just could enhance how we, the process for selecting the coordinators and the different supplemental assignments than how they were awarded. Okay, yes. What we do is we post the positions, meaning we advertise it internally, and we do that for five days. Anyone that's interested is directed to submit a professional interest form, which can be found on our internal website, also called the Wiki, to Human Resources within that five-day window. Every now and then, you'll see something that says until filled, so if it's something that we know we're kinda fishing for people, begging people to do, we'll leave it open until that, until it's filled. After that five-day window, what I do is gather all of the interest forms, take a look at them, anyone meeting the minimum requirements, we will consider, and some people are granted an interview based off of that consideration. We look at different things like attendance, evaluations, and just, you know, prior experience. We then forward those interest applications to the Hiring Administrator. So for, in the case of supplementals, sometimes it's the Athletic Director and his staff, he might have a coach or two on the committee. If it's an academic supplemental, it usually involves Dr. Ragland or Dr. Holden have some input into it. Then what happens from there, there's typically an interview, if it's competitive, sometimes there's only one or two people that apply, and there's no interview, but if it's competitive, we'll offer anyone that meets the qualifications an interview opportunity. They'll interview with a team, usually of people, of interested people that have some expertise in that area. A recommendation is then forwarded to me. Depending on what the position is, sometimes I'm on the committee, sometimes I'm not. Sometimes I interview first, just to see who we, whom we should interview, it just depends. But in general, the recommendation is given to me, then we just consult the salary schedule, and then it's submitted to the Superintendent for his approval at a gender review. And that's really all there is to it. I appreciate that, thank you.
Anything else? Any further questions, comments? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Sure. Dr. Johnson?
I'm staying.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mrs. Rugless?
Aye.
Mr. Burdy?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes, and Superintendent Smith, back to you for 9.02.
Yes, Madam President. The 9.02 Revised Job Description of the Bus Driver Aid, if you look in your package, you'll see the certificates, licenses, and registrations. The information that's been added is, they must obtain and maintain an Ohio Educational Aid Permit. Then finally, the last paragraph is, "Winton Woods City Schools does not discriminate..." The, uh, nine point zero-two revised job description of the bus driver aide. If you look in your package, you'll see the certificates, licenses, and registrations. The information that's been added is they must obtain and maintain Ohio Educational Aid Permit. Then finally, the last paragraph is Wenton Woods City Schools does not discriminate nor tolerate harassment in its employment opportunities, educational programs or activities for any reason, including on the basis of race, color, religion, national origin, sex, disability, military status, ancestry, sexual orientation, age, or genetic information.
Board, a motion would be in order for this item.
I'd like to make, make a motion to approve the updated job description for bus driver aide as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Dr. Johnson?
Ebsing.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mrs. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously and Superintendent, back to you for nine point zero-three.
Yes, the updates, um, for your approval come in bullet number, the essential duties and responsibilities, the assignments changed slightly. Bullet number six, it says checks assignments, corrects papers. Bullet number... Ten, operates equipment such as copier, laptop, Chromebook. And to the next section, it says the educational experience is as an associate or bachelor degree. Previous experience with special education students preferred must be highly qualified in content area of instruction. Their certificate that's needed is a valid educational aid permit. Then the final one is the physical demands. Employee must regularly lift or move up to ten pounds and occasionally lift and move up to a hundred pounds. The employee shall receive crisis prevention training and may occasionally be required to restrain students.
And board, a motion would be in order for this item.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the revised job description regarding instructional assistant, special education as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Sure. Dr. Johnson?
Ebsing.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mrs. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes and we'll now move into nine point zero-four.
Nine point zero-four, receptionist, central office. This person reports to the Executive Director of Human Resources and Legal Services. And further down through in the essential duties, the types, organizers, and compiles materials as assigned for Human Resources, the Office of Teaching and Learning, and the Business Office, as well as the Office of the Superintendent. And finally, uh, the other change in here that was, well, the other thing that was added is the work environment. Again, Wenton Woods City Schools does not discriminate nor tolerate harassment in its employment opportunities, educational programs or activities for any reason, including on the basis of race, color, religion, national origin, sex, disability, military status, ancestry, sexual orientation, age, or genetic information.
And board colleagues, a motion would be in order?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the revised job description, uh, central office receptionist as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Any questions or comments?
I did have one question about the change of, um, oversight from one department to the other. I wondered what, what prompted that or what reasoning?
Well, the position never really reported to the Business Office. It hasn't for some time. Gina Burnett used to fill this role and over the years, she's been sort of a hybrid. She's been communications and HR and just supportive of central office in general. Uh, since she has moved into a different role, this position really is supporting, um, everyone in the office, but ultimately, I'm assuming responsibility for her evaluation and attendance and things like that.
The other thing was, Kuhn, we wanted the clerical staff to be, uh, cross-trained so that they can have other opportunities, uh, because it keeps us in the right status.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Dr. Johnson?
Ebsing.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mrs. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes and we'll move into nine point zero-five. Superintendent Smith?
Nine point zero-five, clerical level, and this is Transportation Secretary. And the only change is, again, discrimination clause, uh, regarding harassment employment opportunities based on race, religion, color, national origin, et cetera.
Board, a motion would be in order?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the revised job description for Transportation Secretary as presented.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mrs. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes and nine point zero-six. Superintendent Smith?
Yes. Um, under the essential duties, this is for clerical student activities, uh, adopted October twenty-second, two thousand eighteen. And the essential duties and responsibilities, their additions, assists all sponsors of student activity accounts and athletic director in the annual preparation of each club or activities, purpose, statement, and budget. Balances all fundraisers of the student activity and principal accounts. Assisting collection, posting, and parental questions. Maintain this records in Dazzle. Supports internal control systems for students' activities and athletic accounting functions, including form, development, and revisions. Assists with arbiter per, uh, pay, system as needed. And assist the treasurer with records and retention. Finally, maintains official records as required by the federal, state, county, and district records retention committee. And of course, the same pieces included regarding discrimination, harassment, employment opportunities, race, color, religion, national origin, disability, military status, ancestry, orientation, age, or genetic information.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to revise the job description for the clerical student activities, um, as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Dr. Johnson?
Ebsing.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mrs. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes and Superintendent Smith, I was getting ready to say you have five more, but we're gonna step in and help you out now by reading these resolutions. So, I am up next for nine point zero-seven. This is a resolution to extend graduation options to the classes two thousand nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. Whereas, section seven-three-three-point-six-seven of House Bill forty-nine of the Hundred and Thirty-Second Ohio General Assembly authorized two additional graduation pathways for students in the class of two thousand eighteen. And whereas, these additional pathways provided a meaningful opportunity for those who did not otherwise meet one of the three existing pathways to graduation. And whereas, Wenton Woods City Schools is seeking the extension of these two additional graduation pathways for the class of nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three to ensure those students have the same opportunities to graduate as the class of two thousand eighteen. And whereas, the earlier school and student focus on both employment and community service helped the members of the class of two thousand eighteen become more prepared employees and informed citizens. And whereas, while a long-term policy solution to graduation pathways is being deliberated, legislative action must be taken immediately for the class of nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three, which have not been offered options granted for the class of two thousand eighteen. And whereas, to extend section seven-three-three-point-six-seven to the class of nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three, the Ohio General Assembly must authorize these two additional pathways for the class of nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. Now therefore be it resolved that the Wenton Woods City School District requests the Ohio General Assembly to act immediately and in advance of December first, two thousand eighteen, to extend the two additional pathways authorized in section seven-three-three-point-six-seven of House Bill forty-nine of the Hundred and Thirty-Second General Assembly to the class of nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three, adopted this twenty-second day of October, two thousand eighteen. And a motion would be in order for this one. So, I guess I'll go ahead and make that motion.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Any discussion or comments?
Madam President, yes, I do have a comment. One of the, one of the reasons that this resolution, that I drafted this resolution is because the Hundred and Thirty-Second General, Ohio General Assembly had made a recommendation to change the graduation requirements for the class of two thousand nineteen and, and beyond. And they, these children would not get the same opportunity as the class of two thousand eighteen. So, the following pathways that were available for the class of eighteen would no longer be available for students of nineteen. That means option one, all meet Ohio jobs, career readiness, sealed requirements, that would be eliminated. Hundred and twenty work, community service hours that the school district approves, that's eliminated. Two point five GPA in senior year. Ninety-three percent attendance in the senior year. Number five, complete a capstone project the senior year defined by the district. Six, earn three or more college credit plus, uh, opportunities, credits at any time during high school. Seven, earn credits for an AP course and earn an AP exam score three or higher anytime during high school. Number eight, earn a work keys exam score three on each of the tests. This is available, but higher scores must be met. And finally, nine, earn a state board-approved industry-recognized credential or credentials that equal at least three points. We, when we started having conversations with members of other districts about this, this issue, we realized that there were probably about six thousand students in the state of Ohio that would not graduate. And so, superintendents band together. Uh, some superintendents wrote their resolutions based on the class of nineteen. I wanted to be very careful that this is about the cohort of nineteen. Because if you wrote the resolution and it mentioned the two thousand nineteen graduates, it would mention this graduates, but not the kids that are freshmen right now. So, we were very, very, uh, concerned about this is the cohort that needs to have the same opportunities as the graduating class of two thousand eighteen.
And so, my only question for you Superintendent Smith is, this is similar to what other school districts in our area are doing?
Absolutely.
So, this was talked about in your superintendent's legislative meeting, I assume?
Technically, they should, there should be about six and, and eight of these resol, resolutions written.
Mm-hmm. Alright. Any further discussion or any questions for Superintendent Smith? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Sure. Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mrs. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously and, let's see. Dr. Johnson, you are up to read nine point zero-eight.
Alright, bear with me. This is the proclamation for National Principals Month, October the, two thousand eighteen. Whereas each year, the month of October is designated National Principals Month in recognition of principals, assistant principals, and other school administrators for their steadfast commitment to ensuring that every child receives equality of education. And whereas, principals and assistant principals are responsible for the day-to-day operation of their school, whereas, which includes leading the instructional programs, acting as disciplinarians, managing educational initiatives, and building relationships with students, teachers, parents, community partners, and others to achieve excellence. And whereas, principals and assistant principals work diligently to establish a positive tone for their school and provide a supportive and safe school environment where students learn, grow, and thought, thrive. And whereas, we are very proud of our principals and assistant principals and sincerely appreciate their ongoing efforts to inspire success in a lifetime of learning in Wenton Woods City Schools and also to view the importance and value of public school education in this community. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Wenton Woods City School District is pleased to join other Board of Education across the United States in proclaiming October, two thousand eighteen, as National Principals Month and encourages the citizens of the Wenton Woods City School District to join in the celebration of National Principals Month by thanking all school administrators for their care and concern they show for our children, adopted this twenty-second day of October, two thousand eighteen. Um, Madam President, I'd like to make a motion that we accept this proclamation for National Principals Month, October, two thousand eighteen.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Any questions or comments? Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mrs. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously and, let's see, who's up next? Mrs. Kuhn for nine point zero-nine.
American Education Week proclamation for, uh, November twelfth through the sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Whereas, um, American Education Week was first observed in December nineteen twenty-one as an opportunity to celebrate the accomplishments of our public schools and to acknowledge the importance of community support for public education. And whereas, teachers, administrators, education professionals, and educational support staff working at the local, regional, or state level serve our children and communities with care and professionalism. And whereas, the strength, vitality, and freedom of our nation depends on citizens who are dedicated to the education of the next generation through the common school, which welcomes all children and strives to educate them to their highest potential. And whereas, partnerships among public schools and their communities help build the support for public education that will sustain this vital institution through its many challenges in educating our children. And whereas, the Wenton Woods City School District Board of Education will ensure equality education for all children that will provide them with the tools they need to maintain our nation's precious values of freedom, civility, and equality. Be it therefore resolved that on this date, October twenty-second, two thousand eighteen, that American Education Week shall be a time to focus attention on the importance of public schools, its students, and its staff. Uh, the Wenton Woods City School District Board of Education hereby proclaims November twelfth through the sixteenth, two thousand eighteen, as American Education Week. And Madam President, I'd like to make a motion, um, that, uh, to approve the proclamation as read. And, uh, I was very happy to read that, 'cause I think it has value with, uh, what's going on in the world today.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Any questions or comments? Okay, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mrs. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously and Mrs. Ruggles, we turn to you for nine point one-zero.
Okay, this is the resolution for International Education Week, November twelfth through the sixteenth, two thousand eighteen. Whereas, the week of November twelfth through the sixteenth, two thousand eighteen, is International Education Week. And whereas, we as a nation are charged with broadening our focus and becoming engaged in building international relationships. And whereas, we should expand our efforts to learn from other countries about techniques and practices that will help us improve our own system of education. And whereas, we should provide leadership in educational issues in appropriate international forums and collaboratively work on initiatives of common beliefs. And... Whereas... Uh-oh. Hold on. And whereas, it is appropriate to educate and encourage students to learn other languages, cultures, and challenges outside our nation's borders. Therefore, be it resolved that the Wenton Woods City School Board of Education formally promotes and supports international awareness and the importance of teaching our students international education skills, adopted this twenty-second day of October, two thousand eighteen. As such, I'd like to make a mo, a motion to approve the resolution for International Education Week, November twelfth through the sixteenth, two thousand eighteen, as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Sure. Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mrs. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously and Mr. Birdy, we turn to you for nine point one-one.
Alright. Memor, memorandum of understanding regarding the utilization of the Business Advisory Council for the Hamilton County Educational Service Center, to serve as the business representative for the undersigned school districts pursuant to Ohio Revised Code thirty-three thirteen-point-eight-two. Whereas, Ohio Revised Code thirty-three point, or thirty-three thirteen-point-eight-two requires each school district and the governing board of each educational service center in the state of Ohio, with the exception of a joint vocational school district or cooperative education district, to establish a Business Advisory Council hereafter, BAC. And whereas, Ohio Revised Code thirty-three thirteen-point-eight-two provides that a school district has entered into a service agreement And whereas Ohio Revised Code 3313.82 provides that a school district has entered into a service agreement with the educational service center hereafter ESC, in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code 3313.843 and/or 3313.845, it is not required to appoint a BAC in the event that the school district enters into an agreement with an educational service center to have the BAC of the governing board serve as the school district's BAC. Now therefore be it agreed by the undersigned school district's Board of Education and governing board of the Hamilton County Educational Service Center as follows. The Hamilton County Educational Service Center Business Advisory Council Consortium under the authority of the provisions of the Revenue Code 3313.82 shall represent the business interests of the undersigned school districts and in accordance with the law shall serve as the BAC for the undersigned boards of education. The Hamilton County Educational Service Center governing board by and through its administrative staff shall ensure that the BAC operates pursuant to the applicable standards set forth in the Revised Code 3313.821. The undersigned school district's Board of Education, by signing this memorandum of understanding, also hereby provides express authority for the Hamilton County Educational Service Center governing board to delegate the requirements to create and implement a BAC to the Great Oaks Career Campuses on behalf of the consortium. This memorandum shall constitute the full and complete understanding of the parties concerning this matter and any amendments or modifications shall be in writing and signed by the parties. In witness whereof duly authorized representatives of the Hamilton County Educational Service Center governing board and the school districts have executed this memorandum on the dates opposite their signatures. Madam President, I move that we approve the memorandum of understanding regarding the utilization of the Business Advisory Council for the Hamilton County Educational Service Center to serve as the business representative for the Wenton Woods City School District as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mrs. Rugliss?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you all for helping us read those resolutions this evening. I'm sure the superintendent expresses his gratitude as well. We'll now move into the Board of Education reports, starting with the legislative report, if you wouldn't mind taking one and passing it down. The legislature and legislators are on break until November 14th, so nothing to report from my last report. However, these slides that I'm passing to you are from the superintendent's legislative group or, or... What do you call the committee? The superintendent's committee? All right, perfect. So this talks about, it gives you a couple bullet points about the House bills that are of utmost importance to our educational facilities, starting with HB 87, which has to do with community schools, HB 360, which is the anti-bullying and hazing, HB 502, which is the youth suicide prevention training. And if I'm not mistaken, is this the one Superintendent Smith where the state or ODE has partnered with the Sandy Hook Promise?
Absolutely.
Okay, I saw that in the OSBA newsletter. So that's great news. Sandy Hook Promise is of course someone we've been partnering with for quite some time. And then last but not least, the emergency removal House Bill 318. So I won't read all of that to you. You can check that out. And hopefully we'll have something more to report on this on our November meeting after the legislature is back in session. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Birdy for the Great Oaks Career Technical Career Center report.
And I sent down to each of you a little earlier just a board highlights from the October board meeting, which they held at the Laurel Oaks Campus out in Wilmington this past month. Just one of some of the presentations they did was Great Oaks Education Foundation. Someone did a presentation on what things they've done to help students learn and to obtain the ability to get jobs. I mean driver's education, scholarships for future, for further education and training. They did go over the Ohio Report Card for the Great Oaks. And in addition to that, I've given you a couple of copies, a couple of pages out of the report card, as well as some goals and objectives that they distributed for the CFO and CEO.
Fantastic. Thank you, Mr. Birdy. We have nothing under item 11 this evening, so we'll move right into our Board of Education comments, starting with Mrs. Rugliss.
Um, I'll keep this short. One of the things that, you know, I want to say is that I was looking at the proclamations and specifically the National Principals Month and International Week. I think it's very important that we as an organization salute our efforts when we are highlighting individuals like the principals. They do so much in our schools to keep us moving towards our goals. And I'm glad that we are utilizing this opportunity to recognize them. As far as International Week, there's so much that's happening in our world. And, you know, oftentimes we tout that we are internet, we have over 20 languages here and at Wenton Woods, but it's good to know that we actually, we don't just tout it, we actually celebrate it. Not in just words, but also in actions and deeds and, you know, finding, making sure that we have an environment that is supportive of our international students. And bringing our students closer to international experiences will only make their experience and growth better. So.
Thank you, Mrs. Rugliss. Mrs. Kuhn?
I wanted to applaud all the opportunities our students have to go out and to represent Wenton Woods wherever they go, whether it's the fine arts, our band visits, our sports. They, it enriches the student experience so much and it enhances their ability to be productive citizens as they go forward. It affords them opportunities to have other colleges see them, to give them scholarships. So these are really important opportunities that is afforded to our students that I think is really, really important to enhance the overall educational experience that Wenton Woods offers our students. Also, I did want just to highlight, since our next meeting, we won't be able to talk about it because the election would be over. But November the 6th is an important day. Great Oaks has an issue on the ballot, as does our local Wenton Woods City School District. So we encourage participation of our civic duty, that our communities support local schools as our proclamation, the American proclamation highlights the values that our public schools afford our communities. So again, November the 3rd, or 6th, not the 3rd, gosh, I give you fake news. I don't want to do fake news. November the 6th, it's a Tuesday, so get out and vote.
Thank you, Mrs. Kuhn. November 6th. How are we? Dr. Johnson?
I had to follow that. Just again, to reiterate about the election and how much we do need your support for the, to support the renewal levy. We need that support in order to keep growing and doing what we do best is educate students. And I also just want to say, this is my first time back probably since July when I had my knee injury. And I injured my knee going to graduation. It wasn't anything that happened, had anything to do with the school. I was stepping off the curb, going to my car, injured my knee, and stood through graduation, but had some problems with it. But I just want to do a shout out. There were a lot of principals, administrators, this board, Mr. Smith, Mrs. Jordan, that reached out to me, sent me texts, you know, checked on me. And I really appreciate that. And that makes me feel like I'm really a part of this, not that I didn't feel like a part of this. But, you know, I can honestly say that it feels good to know that you work with a group of people that care not just about the job that you're doing, but about you individually. So just a thank you to, and those people who reached out to me, they know who they are. So, you know, just a thank you to the principals, the teachers, the administrators. They sent cards, texts, you know, phone calls, emails, and I just really appreciate that. So thank you all, and I'm glad to be back. I'm hoping I can hang in there. So, thank you.
We are glad you're back. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. And Mr. Birdy?
Yes, Dr. Johnson, we are glad you're back.
Thank you.
Happy to see you. Just the groundbreaking ceremony last week was very well attended by community members as well as, you know, our communities that we serve between the village council and the forest park police and fire. It was a great day. It was really nice. It was a little cold, but it was sunny, so that helped. Also, congratulations to the football team that they've secured, I believe, a home playoff game, right? So good for them. That's good. And Aversa Prenticeto, not sure if everybody's aware of this, but she actually received the 2018 ACT College and Career Readiness Champion, was named that for the state of Ohio. So congratulations to her. And I know Mr. Locke and Ms. Albert sent out an email that I believe this Wednesday. The American Studies class is doing some presentations on the effects of plastic and they're looking for community members to come and help evaluate some of what the students are doing. And I know they're doing that between 9:30 and 10:30 and 1:00 and 2:00. So, and I believe it's here in the media center.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Birdy. You always take what I wanted to talk about.
I'm sorry.
But thank you.
You told me before.
I just wanted to commend our staff, I mean specifically Superintendent Smith, Mr. and Mrs. Denny, and everyone who had a part in the groundbreaking ceremonies. It was absolutely phenomenal. I think it surpassed all of our expectations and it was certainly such a happy, happy day, knowing that this time has finally come for the school district and that we're making extreme and very, very large moves for this community. And I can't wait to see those buildings start growing up out of the ground, as we say. And Mr. Denny, specifically to you, your speech that day was quite phenomenal, so thank you for that. I think it's very interesting when we look, take a seat or take a step back and look that we truly are trying to prepare our kids for careers that aren't even there yet. So thank you for bringing that to light, Mr. Denny. Also, just to piggyback on what Mrs. Rugliss said, thank you to all of our amazing principals, some of which were here tonight earlier in our meeting. We couldn't do what we do in all of our buildings without you, so thank you very much. Very happy to pass that proclamation. And then that'll do it for my comments.
Mrs. Miranda, can I add one more thing?
Yeah.
One of the things that I wanted to add is, you know, kudos to the Denny's, to Brandon Smith, Mr. Smith, and Mrs. Ashbrook. One of the things that I loved about that opportunity at Kentucky State is that they took a very parental approach to bringing that opportunity to students. If anybody has children, you know, sometimes you have to make them do some things. They don't see the value in it. But that's what's so great about this district is that there's a parental care about making sure that our children get the best opportunities. And it was great to see all the Facebook pages of how they, they looked like they were enjoying it. And I think, you know, Evan for just saying, "We did not want to go, but we're glad that we did." So thank you for that team for making that happen for our students.
Yes. And that kind of piggybacks on what you said earlier, Paula, about opportunities and that, you know, all of these things we do, we do for a reason, and that reason is for the opportunities for the students. So that was great to see that. And a shout out to Mr. Doctor for the, he made food for our entire band and the staff. And it was very, very gracious of him. He's great. And then also I just wanted to reiterate what all of my colleagues have already said, that November 6th is election day. We need your support for not only the Great Oaks renewal, but for our substitute levy as well. So please come out and vote. It's pretty extraordinary that our school district, A, extended our levy, our operating levy, as long as we did for an entire decade, and B, even more extraordinary that we are not increasing taxes at all this time. So please come out and support. And let's see, do we have any representatives from our unions this evening? We do.
Before she comes up.
Yes, yes.
The OC Strong Union Sweet Treats, amazing. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for this.
Catch me on camera. Catch me on camera. If OC's giving this, WWTA, we need sandwiches. Bravo. Way to go.
Yes, thank you so much for the sweet treats. And come on up. And thank you for waiting patiently throughout the entire meeting.
Good evening to the board, Dr. Smith, or Mr. Smith. Dr. Johnson, I just want to say welcome back. OC is excited about taking part, and we want to say thank you for taking, or allowing us to take part in a groundbreaking ceremony. We really appreciate it being acknowledged and being there, and thank you for the invite. We also want to say thank you for also letting us take part in the bond levy. We have been active there, and you have our support. And we want you to know that we are excited as well. OC is very excited about the new schools because it's what we do. We are support. We support. That is our union. We are to support workers of Wenton Woods. So again, OC just want to say good evening to everyone and thank you for acknowledging us and allowing us to be a part of it all. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
You're welcome.
Okay, do we have a need for a executive session this evening, Superintendent Smith? All right, perfect. So we'll skip right over item 14 and move right into item 15, which is the adjournment of this fine meeting this evening. So thank you for being with us. Happy holidays at the end of the month, and we'll see you when we get back in November.